Board members?
Yep.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13, Tuesday, February 12th, Board, uh, School Board Meeting to order. If we could rise and-
Oh, yeah, February 12th.
12th, yeah.
Mine says January 22nd.
Um, if we could stand and, you are punchy. If we could stand and say to pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Clark, did you call roll call?
Ms. Meyer?
Here.
Landware?
Here.
Mr. Bardell?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Ms. Palmer here.
Great, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is mission statement Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with support of town, small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talent, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Uh, next on the agenda is the agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, correspondence. I'll entertain a motion on the floor for approval of agenda.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Scott, do I hear a second?
Second.
A second by John, discussion regarding, uh, the agenda. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion has carried. Uh, next is announcements, February 18th, Monday, no school Presidents' Day, February 19th, Tuesday, 5:30, School Board Work Session in the Community Room, uh, February 26th, Tuesday, 7 o'clock, regular School Board Meeting, and March 12th, Tuesday, 7 o'clock, regular School Board Meeting here in the Community Room, and all the public is welcome. Correspondence, Superintendent Kelly.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, there's no correspondence at this time.
Thank you. Uh, next is communication to the Board. Uh, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the School Board. The Board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the Administration follow up. The Board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. I ask that you be in mind of Minnesota State Statute of Data Privacy. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the Board? No? Okay. Next, we're moving on to the consent agenda, minutes of January 8th and 22nd, 2013 School Board Meetings, Personnel Report, Treasurers Report for December 2012, entertain a motion on the floor.
So moved.
Motion by Scott, uh, here a second?
Second.
Second by John, discussion regarding the consent agenda. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion has carried. Uh, next, we're moving on to discussion reports, information items, reports from members of the Board. This is where the, um, members of the Board can briefly let you know kind of some of the things they've been doing since we last met. Tonight, we will start with Lori Meyer.
Um, well, I had the opportunity to have, um, meet Mr., or Member Bardell for coffee. We had a little meet and greet, and, um, last week I attended the Columbia Academy PTO meeting, um, the sub-policy committee meeting earlier this evening, and, um, last Saturday went to the community, one of the community conversation sessions with Senator Barb Goodwin and our Representative Carolyn Lane to hear what's going on at the Legislature and how it, the funding and budget proposals and how that could impact school districts. That's it.
Great, thank you. Ted?
Um, tonight, I just came from the, uh, the Reach Dinner and the first session over at Highland, and, um, there were several parents, and, and it's a great program from what I can see. Uh, it's all about helping parents become more engaged in their students' education and helping to start the process of planning for college and planning for trade school right at the elementary level. Uh, so, uh, it's, uh, definitely great ideas and great encouragement there. So, if you're, if you are a Highland parent, I think you, there's still time to get in on, on the Reach, um, sessions, and I, I highly encourage you to do that. Um, I also attended, um, the Chamber of Commerce Business Council since we last met, uh, represented the, the School Board, and, um, uh, Dr. Holmgren was also there representing the, the school district. Um, and then the Lions, uh, is, the Lions are having a peace poster contest coming up that, um, I would, that all the elementaries are, actually all of the schools, I believe, are eligible to participate in, so, um, more details on that will be coming, and, uh, it's a great opportunity for, uh, students to, to show off their artwork. Um, Principal Busman, uh, was very gracious. See, Columbia Academy is the, the school that I've, um, been assigned to as a liaison, and, uh, Principal Busman gave me a wonderful tour of Columbia Academy, and I hadn't been there, uh, for a few, few months, so she showed me around, uh, students were, looked great in their uniforms, and, um, the dance class was going, and, uh, you know, very exciting to see all the students dancing and learning that art form, and, uh, we also, I also toured the Achieve Program, and, uh, students were engaged, they were, they were learning, and, uh, you know, that was, uh, it seemed to be going very well at the Academy. Um, and then I toured, you know, art, art classes, and just a great tour to see all that's going on in Columbia Academy, and if parents haven't been in, or if community members haven't been into the Academy, again, I'd highly encourage you to do so, and, um, just check out what's there, because, uh, there's a lot going on, including engineering, so. I also attended the Columbia Academy PTO with, um, with Member Meyer, and, um, I think that's it for this.
Great, thank you, Ted. Scott?
Uh, Madam Chair, I'm just gonna report out on the, um, AMSD Meeting on February 1st, and, um, uh, I was there with Superintendent Kelly, and Representative Mariani from the House Education Committee and Senator Torres-Rae from the Senate Education Committee was there to talk about, um, education, right, and what's going on in the Education Committee in the House and Senate. The interesting thing is, I, um, my notes say that Representative Torres-Rae was actually born in Columbia, and, and I know Representative Mariani said he was from Puerto Rico, so here we have, um, you know, immigrants in, in, um, Legislature and talking about, um, education in the Subcommittee about how really the bottom line was, and I'll paraphrase, but how, um, education overall in Minnesota, if you look at the statistics, is doing very well, however, um, versus Latino, uh, students, not very well. So, um, Representative Mariani flatly said that, um, um, the results aren't, aren't good for the type of money and resources that we're putting in, so we gotta think of things a little bit differently, so they both sort of echoed that, that traditional things haven't been working, so they're struggling to figure out what is gonna work to bring our, um, Latino students along, and make sure their graduation rates are, are much better than they are right now. The statistics are, um, only 47% of Latino students graduate in the state, um, which is not good at all. Um, they also talked about, well, you know, um, themes were how best to use the budget. We're giving a pot of money, um, on the Education Committee, you know, for a hypothetical pot of money, how best do we use it to serve most of the students, and particularly students where the system is failing them, or they're not putting forth the effort, or whatever the reasons, they're still getting down to what those reasons were. Um, one interesting, couple of interesting comments, um, they basically said, use testing as an assessment, um, they felt, at least Representative Mariani felt, the grad test was not a really good idea, 'cause it's not determinative of success. Um, testing should be used as a tool. He brought up the Irondale, um, early college classes, which was a kind of a model for what could happen in the state overall, and maybe ideas to get students, they'll get, uh, more college credit, or college credit while they're attending high school. Um, he also felt that there would probably be some, at least, talk in the, in the House about a statewide bullying bill, anti-bullying bill, um, also bills regarding early childhood, all-day kindergarten with the universal access, um, integration revenue promotion kinds of things to revenue to replace the integration aid, and, um, funding for, uh, English language learners. And then just quickly, um, some of the other bills that the Executive Director, AMSD, talked about were, um, funding tied to inflation for schools, um, and possibly local levy run over by local school boards, um, so in order not to force the school boards and schools to go out just for operating funds, you know, and, uh, have the expense to have a referendum and do all that kind of thing, so, um, I think, uh, that's about it.
You have that other one? You wanted to bring up the-
Oh, um, today I was on a field trip, um, I'm a member of, um, Rotary, and I was on a field trip to both Hennepin Technical College and North Hennepin Community College, and the reason why I was, um, on the field trip is the Fridley-Columbia Heights Rotary supports a, in Fridley, what's called the STRIVE Program, and basically what it is, is, is scholarships for, for post-high school education that each of these member schools, and there's another one, Noka-Hennepin Community College, I think, will match. So in other words, the scholarships range in value from Rotary from between 200 and 1,500 is the maximum, so for each of those, if the student attends those schools, those schools would match it dollar for dollar, so 1,500 could end up to be 3,000. So, so I wanted to, uh, tag along and see what that was all about, and, uh, see what these schools were about and the programs they offered, and, and wow, I was impressed at the amount and diversity of programs that, uh, both these schools presented, so.
Great. Thanks.
Yep.
Clark?
Well, I had a very busy week. Um, I kinda started out with, um, going over to the Highland Winter Sing. Um, I did miss the first graders, I was really disappointed about that, but I came in during the second grade concert, and, um, they are absolutely adorable. Um, and I did hear that, that, that this particular concert is, was also recorded and will be broadcast, but I haven't received a notice yet from my son. Um, the fifth grade band was also playing, and they, they just started out this year with their instruments, and I do believe that was through a grant from VH1, and, um, they are using every one of the 32 instruments that were, um, that were, uh, loaned to the school, so that was a lot of fun to see, and I know that they're gonna have a couple more concerts coming up, and if you get a chance to, be sure and go out and see them. They, they improve so quickly, it's just amazing. Um, the next thing that I, I did was I attended the 916 Meeting, that's the Special Education District, um, that we are in collaboration with, with, um, several other districts, and one of the topics that they were discussing was a new facility that's gonna be built in Blaine. Um, now, this, uh, this facility is, um, it has some special needs for the, for the kids, it has, um, uh, separate entrances, um, so that they can unload, uh, multiple buses at the same time, uh, this is the design work, um, and a special, um, playground, uh, playground area for, um, with the, uh, the firmer turf, you know. Um, in addition to that, uh, one of the things, uh, that they were talking about was how they actually had to construct the actual, um, the actual building itself, uh, the hallways need to be very wide, and they also need to be curved so that there's no line of sight for some of the children, 'cause I guess apparently some of these kids like to bolt for the doors, and if they don't see them, then they are a lot calmer. Um, so, one of the things that the, uh, construction supervisor or coordinator, I'm not entirely sure what the title is for that, um, some of the costs were, uh, higher than they were originally anticipating, 'cause it's not a typical K8 building. So, anyway, that was one of the things, and I've included, that's been, was included in the packet, so if you wanna look over that stuff, even questions, just give me a call. Um, one of the, um, the other thing that I did was I, I attended the Officers' Workshop, and I hopefully got proper training as a clerk, so I will not make the same mistakes I did in the previous meetings, and that was very informative, as always, and you always learn something new, even though you still, you hear the same information over and over and over again, sometimes it, it just makes a little bit more sense after the third time, so I'll do much better. I also had a meeting with Superintendent Hayes, um, she is the Superintendent of 916. Is that everything? I think that was everything. Yeah, okay. Thanks. John?
Um, I also was able to attend the School Board Officers' Training, and, um, walked away with some really good information. The morning consisted of a, I guess I'd describe it as a lively conversation regarding open meeting laws, and then in the afternoon, I sat through the, uh, effective Board Meetings, and even though I'm not a, a Board Chair, I thought it'd be a good idea to keep educating myself, and they talked about a lot of things, and some of the things that we're already doing, whether it's how to set up a meeting, and how the meeting should run, and things like that, so reinforced that we're doing some, some things really well here. Um, I also attended the Chamber Meeting, pseudo-fire department, pseudo-school board, um, had the opportunity to attend the North Park Community Gathering, uh, they do monthly, and then, uh, yesterday, I think it was, I was able to, uh, watch the proud presentations at Columbia Academy for the kids that were receiving the honor roll recognition, as well as some of the outstanding students that are, I think, nominated by teachers, I think is where that comes from, so, um, it's nice to see that, you know, the kids are getting recognized for hard work, so I think that's it.
Great. Well, um, I've had a couple of meetings with Superintendent Kelly, I also have had numerous, uh, Executive Committee Meetings at West Metro Education with, also along with the meeting, a lot of things happening in that district, and, um, some things that maybe aren't as wonderful, but we're moving forward and trying to make things come even again at those two schools. Um, I also have been pretty busy, I'm, uh, this week I will be attending the orientation for Minnesota, uh, School Board, uh, orientation to get me kinda on board with all the things that the State Board does, and then I'll be attending a retreat next week, so that's gonna be kinda fun. I have also had numerous conversations with, uh, Board Members across District 5, um, and it's interesting because it's been about Columbia Heights, and kinda, uh, picking my brain to see what we have been doing, and, you know, all the good things. It was nice to hear, uh, St. Anthony came forward, they, they would like to tour our schools and see some of the great things they're, they're doing, that we're doing, and, um, actually came forward and said that we're being talked about, uh, because these, this district is really moving and shaking, so, uh, kudos to you and your staff and your Administration and the kids. Um, I just think it's great when you hear from St. Francis or someone in Noka-Hennepin, and they wanna come and look at our schools, um, and see what the kids are doing, and see what some of the people, the ideas that we've brought forward. So, congratulations to these schools once again, I, I stand very proud, uh, representing, um, this district. Um, that's all for me, what about Superintendent's Report?
Well, the Superintendent's Report is kind of lengthy tonight, so just sit back and relax. Uh, as Member Bardell, um, already stated, he and I were at the, uh, AMSD Regular Board Meeting, I also attended the Executive Committee, because I'm now sitting on that, and the focus of that meeting was the Governor's proposed budget, um, House and Senate Legislative Priorities, and platform issues that might be coming up. Um, if, if you're interested in seeing any of those, those are on the Association of Metropolitan School District website, and you can see each and any, any one of those, and if you have questions, please ask Scott or I. Um, I attended the Northeast Metro 916 Superintendent Advisory Meeting, um, and that was focused on issues of diversity and equity, and in addition, we talked more as Superintendents about the proposed Special Education Audit, that what we're doing with between six and 10 school districts this coming, uh, 2013. Um, it was a legislative, it was busy legislatively, um, this, the last couple of weeks. Um, we met with Senators Goodwin, with Representative Carolyn Lane and Connie Benardi individually, um, and, uh, Senator, um, Senator Goodwin and Representative Lane were also on site. Uh, our, our focus was early childhood learning, and also, um, the need for all-day, everyday kindergarten, um, recognizing the cost, and then we talked a little bit about Special Education Cross-Subsidy and the impact that it has on the General Education Fund. The management team has been meeting with Springstead Incorporated on the District Satisfaction Survey that we promised that we would be doing, tied to the strategic roadmap, and so, um, we will actually be having a conference call on Friday, um, to formulate some of the surveys, uh, survey questions and topical areas as based on the roadmap and what we wanna learn from the community for feedback, and then, yeah, at one of our work studies, we will be bringing that forward for you to take a look at before it actually goes out into the community. We had, I, as I said before, I had a, a, a meeting, I said on my update with Chief NATO, uh, we went out for coffee and conversations around issues of safety and security in our schools, and he has set up, um, a contact with me for the Fridley Chief of Police, and we'll be meeting with him as well, and we, we're already having in, in conversations with, um, uh, the fire, so we're updating all of those. We hired a, uh, the District Summer School Administrators, and I wanna thank in advance that Dean Matthew Arnold of Highland will be doing the elementary, and Assistant Principal Rick Osby will be doing Columbia Academy this summer, so we welcome them to the team. We had a very important, um, uh, meeting on curriculum with the Northeast Bank, um, and they're working collaboratively with us on financial literacy, and something they feel very strongly about for both middle school and high school students, and we do as well, and a software that would cost us a great deal of money, the, the, the bank is actually gonna sponsor, and so we're gonna do a pilot, um, at both the high school and the middle school, and, uh, we wanna thank them, and, uh, we'll let you know how that is, that, how that will be coming off. We are in the middle of preliminary staffing meetings, and I know that, um, every time we pass in January, that resolution to look for efficiencies and economies, uh, that puts Administration in the mode of looking at what are our projected enrollments, um, what are our staff and student needs for next year, and so we've had preliminary meetings with each of the elementary and, um, secondary buildings excluding the high school, which we'll meet this week, um, and you'll be seeing some of those recommendations, um, later in the year. We did a facilities assessment with the Cunningham Group at North Park, and I know that some of you were very interested in what we would be doing with our space needs the next round, and so, um, it was thought that it would be, um, important for us to assess the entire building first before we started, um, moving too many other things around, and to look at it programmatically, as well as what we need, um, for updating the facilities, and so, um, actually, uh, Bill and I were over for about an hour, but I think that Brian and Jeff and others spent at least a half day going through every nook and cranny of North Park, and there'll be more of that brought forward for you as, um, that report rolls out. Um, I wanna thank the Boosters tonight for sponsoring Heights Pride Nights. Um, it's become a tradition, it's been about five years now, that, um, the Boosters have sponsored, um, a dinner for the different schools, and then we have featured an athletic program, and I had the opportunity and the joy to go to the Valley View Highland, which, uh, Booster Night, um, Heights Pride, that, uh, featured the girls' basketball team, and then, um, the, uh, the boys', uh, was, uh, was featured by Columbia Academy, and so a good time was had by all, and it's so important for people to get together, particularly on a wintry night, so thanks to the Boosters and thanks for all that attended. Um, I also enjoyed, uh, the boys' swim team, and I did see Mr. Larkin there, um, they performed very well, and we had a wrestling, um, a wrestling match here at the school district, it was a quad match, and I had no idea that they go on that long, so, we started and we ranted, 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 there was a lot about wrestling, um, that night, um, and as, um, other folks have already stated, um, I, I attended the Subcommittee on School Board Policy right before this, and I've had multiple meetings and conversations with School Board Members around this table and with the Chair.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is Gifted and Talented Blue Ribbon Task Force, Dwayne Burkus, Director of Teaching and Learning, Mary Busman, Columbia Academy Principal.
All right, good evening, Chairperson Lee, Superintendent Kelly, and members of the Board. Um, we're happy and excited to be with you here this evening, as an informational item to just let you know, um, that there is a Blue Ribbon Task Force on E-12, Gifted and Talented, uh, programming in Columbia Heights Public Schools. You've seen this slide before, um, really talking about, uh, from Team Works, and Dennis Cheesebro and our work together, that there are the three sections of, um, of, um, the, the three different parties that really work together to run a school district, and that is the Governance, which is the School Board, the Management Team, which is our Administration, and then also consultation from our constituents, our parents, our community, our students. So, we are bringing, um, all those folks together so that we can bring you a proposal as we move forward. The Task Force is really working on, um, understanding what our present reality is, and then taking a look at how do we, um, understand the emotions around our programming as well, so what are our internal feelings and accommodations, or our feelings, our associations that we're making with our Gifted and Talented Program? So we have a really good sense of where we're at, and then what we wanna do is to create a sense of common purpose, a sense of understanding and revisioning, um, what we're doing with our Gifted and Talented Program as we move forward, so we can create shared commitment. So we bring to you this evening, um, at the management level, uh, the knowledge that the Administration was going to consult with our staff, parents, and community members to review the current Gifted and Talented Program to build a shared knowledge of current research and best practices in Gifted and Talented identification and programming, so that we can then bring to the Superintendent, and then ultimately to the Board, um, suggestions and to adopt, uh, changes and resolutions, or changes, uh, in the Gifted and Talented Program as the Task Force believes we should make those recommendations.
So with that, um, the Task Force is really trying to connect as much as possible to the strategic plan, and I think that with this, uh, we, so, we see many good connections. We talked in our mission statement about helping all kids to discover their talents, unleash their potential, I think that's really what this Task Force is trying to do for our gifted students, finding new ways to excel, so again, looking for new ways for us to help kids to be their very best, on the academic excellence with access to flexible programming and options designed around student needs, our gifted students have special needs, uh, that need to be met through special programs, and so we're trying to do that. And then really, uh, I think it's, it's about that innovation that comes from expanding, um, access and opportunities by turbocharging what works and redesign what needs to be met. So that's, I think, how we are trying to connect to our, our roadmap, and then with that, uh, there are, within the strategic plan, many different levels of, uh, work that we are doing, and one of the, some of the areas that then we are gonna connect to is, we have talked about in our district, um, we will have a multi-tiered system of interventions, and that is interventions for students who are below grade level, but it is also for, for those students who are above grade level and need that extra challenge. Uh, we'd like to increase our enrollment in pre-AP and AP for students of color, uh, so that it's, uh, is, our, our classes are similar in their makeup to what our general population is. We'd like to continue to improve on our market share of school-aged children, we think a gifted, strong gifted program helps with that, and then of course, uh, we always hope that we can do that in a way that is financially responsible and that, uh, is to the benefit of the district financially as well. Then, uh, charges to us from the Superintendent include, uh, then to conduct that complete and thorough review of the district Gifted and Talented Program, and that's really where we are right now, we're conducting that thorough review. Uh, we will then, and are in the process of talking about our data, so that data book will include many different things. Last night, we met, and we talked about student identification, we talked about participation and achievement, and so we'll be working through all of those different pieces as we work together. And then, uh, we will talk about our scope and sequence for the programs that we want, what, how do we want that to look, um, and we will base that on best practice, and, uh, we have people talking to us each time we meet, uh, now at the beginning, about what is best practice in Gifted and Talented, and then of course, in addition to what we learned from research, we'll also, uh, request that our stakeholders have their, uh, two cents in terms of what they think we should do, so that we can consider not just what is being done elsewhere, but what our stakeholders really feel.
Continuing with our charges, um, we, we wanna be able to develop a district operational plan that talks about our purpose, our beliefs, and our goals for the Gifted and Talented Program in the future. We wanna develop recommendations to strengthen, enhance, and possibly restructure the District Gifted and Talented Program. We will develop a proposal for budget staffing and financing of this envisioned district-wide Gifted and Talented Program, and also an evaluation tool to assess our progress. And lastly, uh, and always thinking about the strategic plan, we wanna make sure that our, uh, Gifted and Talented Program of the future aligns with the philosophy and the beliefs and the goals of the strategic roadmap we've already set. We have representation from all over the district, uh, Mr. Burkus, Director Burkus and I are co-chairing, um, and I feel very- Mr. Burkas, Director Burkas and I are co-chairing and I feel very fortunate to be learning and working with Director Burkas. We also have Directors of Community Education and Technology, Coordinators of our district programs and Principals and Teachers from all five of the schools.
We've had the chance to learn from a couple of people already. Dr. Karen Westberg from the University of St. Thomas, one of the better-known experts in the metro area, along with Dr. Richard Cash last night. Two dynamic speakers, people that I think our team has learned a lot from already. We want to make sure that our team has a common body of knowledge, that we have informed discussions when we start trying to decide what to do next. Want to make sure that that's based on a good understanding of at least what the most important pieces of information are in Gifted and Talented education research. And so, we've asked these consultants to come in, talk with us. And then, Dennis Cheesebro will be back and help us to connect that all to the strategic plan. So, our timeline, we hope that we can work through this entire second semester of the school year and through the month of June and come up with most of the work being done, but possibly having to work into the fall and bring those recommendations then to Superintendent Kelly and to you as the board sometime next fall in terms of what we would like to see happen. So, that's kind of where we're at now. We're at the beginning stages. We have a great committee of very dedicated people. We'll meet six times or at least and so, many, many hours of work will be going into this. But we wanted to see if you had any questions on, at this point.
Questions, anyone?
Is Beth Folly also going to be in?
Beth is part of the committee.
One of the coordinators.
Anyone else, questions?
Glad you're doing it, thank you.
Appreciate all your work, thank you.
Next on the agenda is Common Core Standards. Dwayne Burkas, Director of Teaching and Learning.
Well, Dwayne boots up the next presentation. I just wanted to remind the board that a big focus for the national conference will be on Common Core. And so, before we go out to learn from the many, we thought we might want to talk about what the state is doing and what we're thinking about in the district as well.
Yes, Chairperson Lee, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. Common Core is making big waves across the United States. And I think it's making big waves because there really is a new push in Minnesota but across the country to prepare every student for a post-secondary diploma. And that would mean either a two-year technical or two-year college or four-year college degree. But really, I think the whole thrust of the Common Core is that a high school diploma in this day and age is probably not enough, that it might be similar to what a middle school degree was not so long ago, that you need more. And so, we have to have as our goal that all students are able to go on to a post-secondary institution. And so, the Common Core has then, with that as its goal, been adopted by most states, 47 in terms of language arts. You'll see Minnesota with the stripes there because we have not adopted the math, but we have adopted the language arts. So, and that is in place in 2012, 2013 school year. There is talk right now, seems that we are pushing fast towards a science also coming on board as a part of the Common Core, probably in 2015. So, when we're talking about standards, nothing I think like this has ever been seen before where standards have been adopted pretty, almost by, across the country. You'll see very, very few states that have not adopted it. So, it's really a national movement. But really, again, that college and career readiness is where we want to go. But what we know is that there's a gap then between the high school graduate that typically comes out in college career readiness. Many, many students that go on to college have to take remedial courses. Many, many other students don't make it to college. So, in order to close that gap, we have to kind of look at standards. And if you look at the way standards have normally been written, it's been from the, what do you need to know in kindergarten, then well, let's see, let's figure out what you want to know in first grade and you build it up to a high school diploma. Common Core went the opposite direction. They started with, okay, what do you need to do to be successful in your first year of college? And let's build down from that. So, what you'll see then is bigger steps. In order to do that in the same amount of time, you've got to take larger steps than we did to get to our current high school diplomas across the country. So, with that, they hope though, with that, that a high school graduate then, that diploma that you have, will equal college readiness, that you are ready for one and the same. So, it's built on that premise, that all students will be college or career ready. And the standards then have been built from that backwards down to kindergarten. There are, along with the standards, two different organizations that are working on tests for this. At this time, neither one is complete, but they will be coming, they'll be online and they should be available and being given across the country in 2014 school year. Minnesota, incidentally, is not part of that group and they're not part of one of the working groups, but I'm sure that these groups are going to have a lot of influence on the tests across the country as people begin to compare, not just how different districts within a state are doing, but how are districts across different states doing. And so, these testing groups are in the process of developing them. One state has already gone through this process, Kentucky has given the test and you can see that in 2011, their scores were dramatically better than they were in 2012 when they gave the test. So, this is something that people across the country are anticipating. When you look at standards being ramped up considerably, you're looking at most likely a drop in scores. And that's certainly what they've been telling people and Kentucky at least experienced was exactly that. So, the two things that come to mind, I think, when you talk about college readiness, it's based on text. In other words, it is very, very heavy in literacy. It is requiring literacy levels that we've never seen before. And that rigor then, that they're expecting is all about, again, what do you need to do in college? And you think about how kids, college kids study, what kind of skills they need and trying to develop that from an early age on. So, one of the things that they talk about then is to increase the reading of nonfiction texts. And they're very, almost formulaic about it. In elementary, 50% of what kids read should be nonfiction. And by the time you are a senior in high school, 70% of what you are reading should be nonfiction. This comes straight out of the Common Core standards. So, there's been a reshift, or a shifting, I should say, away from narrative, away from fiction, where probably there was a 70, 30 at the elementary or even more in the past. So, a change in terms of the kinds of reading, the kind of reading that kids are expected to do. In addition to that, really what they're saying now is that everybody teaches reading. And so, the standards of the Common Core are not just for language arts teachers, but they have standards for reading and writing, for social studies, math, science, arts. All these teachers have standards that come out of the Common Core that they are expected to teach in their content areas. Again, something that we've never seen before. We've talked about teachers, all teachers need to teach reading. Now, we actually have standards that they are expected to meet. So, it's a group, truly a group effort. In addition to that, what they're talking about now is a, really a shift away from what has been the thrust of reading instruction, of finding what where kids are at and teaching them from there, just a little bit harder and building them up. To a theory that kids learn best if you really make it complex. If you really make it hard, they'll rise to the occasion if teachers really teach well to it. So, there's some interesting lines in there where they talk about, you know, teachers are going to have to be more patient and kids are going to have to learn how to struggle a little bit more. So, we're anticipating there'll be more kids that look like that as they work on some of the texts that we are going to be putting in front of them. Also, writing is now a major part of what we are doing. With the No Child Left Behind Act and the emphasis on reading, writing got a bit of a short shrift. With Common Core, there's a re-emphasis of writing and you can see that they, again, they say, what do you want us to write? College kinds of assignments, summaries, short research projects, argumentative essays. And when do they want us to start those? They want us to start them in second grade. So, it's building on college readiness skills from a very early age all the way through high school. In addition, vocabulary, we know that academic vocabulary is the key to understanding much of what kids read. We also know that there's some words that are more powerful than others because you see them in many, many different kinds of academic texts. There's a strong focus on that as well. Teach kids words that are of high value, that they'll see often in academic texts. So, again, as we work with these more complex texts that we are part of the Common Core, we will have to focus a lot more on teaching kids explicitly vocabulary. Finally, the Common Core requires us to work with diverse media, in other words, to work with technology. And so, how do we gather information? How do we analyze whether that's good information? How do we create documents using digital formats? And then, how do we present that? So, it's a, I think tied very well into where 21st century learning is taking us. So, in conclusion, challenge and support, we definitely have a much higher challenge to meet. And with that, we're going to have to create stronger support. And that means some new skills that we're going to have to have work on with teachers. Kids are going to need more time to master things. We need more individualized feedback and they're going to need multiple opportunities probably to reach mastery because of the high level of this, of these standards. So, to date, what have we been working on here in our district? We created new curriculum maps over the last couple of years in order to make sure that we are aligned to these new standards. We implemented new K-2 resources last year and this is our second year of new reading resources that are aligned to those standards. Six-12 this year has implemented new resources as well. That includes one-to-one laptops in language arts at the high school and textbooks at Columbia Academy that are both paper and digital. There's District Ride Writing Initiative going on this year where all teachers are expected to teach writing every day. And we are in the process of finding and purchasing new 3-5 resources for the upcoming school year. And that ongoing professional learning around teaching literacy is something that we don't anticipate going away, that that'll be there for many years to come. As far as what to expect next, that's my bad news, I think, but I would, I need to be honest. We will, along with other districts, I think, be looking at a possible dip in our scores because of the, we know that this happened in math, when the standards are raised, there's an adjustment. And so, that may very well happen to us as well. We will though, in order to meet these standards, and we are, I think, making a very collective effort at teaching reading and writing. In our last district day on Friday, we talked about all teachers teach writing, whether chemistry or PE or language arts, you teach writing. In addition to that, that this college readiness begins in elementary, doesn't start in high school, starts at second grade, even into K-1, but really at second grade, it starts ramping up, same standards all the way through. And then, a possible need, again, also, that we may say we need different kinds of resources in order to do this. But that's an overview of where we're at with the Common Core here as well as in the state and the country, so.
Questions? Anybody got any?
Is there a timeframe when it has to be implemented, the Common Core?
Well, the Common Core, and it's different in different states. Most states, it's next year. So, in Minnesota, it's one year ahead, Kentucky was two years ahead. I'm not quite sure why Minnesota decided they'd go one year earlier. So, we are, I mean, we are aligned to the, and teaching to it right now. But most states, it's next year. So, I think there'll be, Minnesota will be one year ahead of many states in terms of the results from their, the testing that'll come out in the spring.
Any idea why Minnesota didn't go with the math as well?
From what I understand, the Minnesota math team that looked at it felt like the Minnesota standards are actually higher. And they felt like that for that reason, we'll keep ours.
Anybody else? Great, thank you very much. Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the new telephone system. Brian Hennigan's, Director of Technology and Security Services. Bill Holmgren, Director of Finance and Operations.
Phil sits way over there. Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Let me just get this up here. So, tonight, we just kind of want to provide you just a brief information on what we're working on right now in particular, the district phone system. Right now, we kind of had some existing needs with our current phone system, which is aging quite a bit, as well as our voicemail system. And particularly over the last few years, we've seen some issues. And those issues come with costs. And anything around technology, and of course, phones aren't, isn't a new technology, especially wired phones, but there are new technologies that go along with that wired system and, which offer a lot more and will save a lot more on internal staff time. And when you have issues, the districts have incurred a lot of costs to external companies coming in to help us fix the older aging system. So, we've seen some high need there, particularly with the lightning strike that we had just last year. So, we're looking at repairing and replacing, or really replacing those systems. And we also have redundancy concerns currently right now. If we have an issue like that lightning strike, the phone system goes down, the district phone system is down. So, that's a high, high need for us to build that in. Obviously, when you're talking about a phone system for an entire school district, there's a cost and it's not necessarily the cheapest thing to do. So, I'll let Bill kind of talk about that. But we do have a plan of what we're going to, how we're going to approach it.
Actually, ever since I've been here, we've known the phone system's been aging. And last year, we really saw some huge costs in keeping it maintained and keeping it working. I believe it was a whole week it was, we did not have a phone. So, going forward, what we're looking at doing to try to pay for this new system and not have a big hit to our general fund, we're looking at using all capital dollars and we're looking at leasing those phones over a five-year period, which will bring the cost down to a amount that we can handle here to protect the program.
So, that's, yeah, that's pretty much it with the
Pretty much it.
With the cost. So, really, our next steps are, this is just to inform the board that this is a project that we are planning currently and that at the February 26 regular school board meeting, we'll be coming forward to you to ask to authorize a release for a request for proposal for a new phone system or a voice-over internet protocol system. So, this was just, again, just an information item to the board that we will be presenting that at the next board meeting and asking for that. And again, that request for proposal is really, it's not that we've suddenly said we are putting in a new phone system at that very moment. It's really just requested to see costs for putting in a new phone system. And we do, again, have a plan currently to approach and pay for that system. Any questions?
Would that allow us to update the system if we lease? Is that part of the plan, you know, to, if you're leasing a product, you can receive updates?
Yeah, as far as a lease, the biggest thing with updating wouldn't be necessarily the hardware, it would be the software components of that system. So, that will help us get those things in a lease approach, which are important because you get the new features.
We all know technology changes
Yes, correct.
Hello.
So, I understand that you'd like to bring this forward so that you could seek out how much this is going to cost? Do we have any idea of what we're in for?
Well, first of all, that's what we're asking for. We'll ask for authority just to advertise to get quotes so we know what it's going to cost. We will move forward if it all works out. Now, preliminary cost, we really don't know exactly what that's going to be. I mean, there's been numbers given to us, but there's been a high range and a low range. I guess I'm apprehensive just to give you a number that might come in different later. We certainly, we'll talk about that before we ever go down any type of road to go ahead and purchase that system. But it will be several hundred thousand dollars over paid.
Further question? Thanks for the information.
Thank you.
Next is Electronic Open Meeting Laws. Brian Hennigan's, Director of Technology and Security Services.
Okay. So, members of the board, Chairperson Lee, Superintendent Kelly. So, members of the board, Chair Person Lee, Superintendent Kelly. My intention tonight is not to be the master of electronic open meeting law and inform you on all there is to know about open meeting law. Really, my intention is to just briefly discuss about some procedures that we've put in place based off a specific piece of the open meeting law. Particulars, the statute is 13D dot 015. That's kind of that specific component, which is directly related to school board meetings by telephone or other electronic means. That's what covers, that area covers that specific piece. So, again, you know, there's, there's been discussion about school board meetings by telephone or electronic means, specific school members attending those meetings by that. So, what we've done as a district is we've been reviewing a policy, and our policy is 205. And that 205 refers directly to the state statute 13D, which, again, that 13D dot 015 is kind of that main piece, although there are other components of that. And I know that member Larkin said earlier in the meeting that he had attended a presentation on open meeting laws. So, we're, we are, again, we're reviewing this. We have put some procedures together based on our understanding of the statutes. And again, you know, nothing's set in stone. It's their procedures that can be changed immediately as needed based on statute. So, again, we've, our process right now is we're establishing those procedures. So, again, the purpose is to establish structured steps for a board member to request attending a meeting by means of a telephone or electronic means. It's based right out of the statute. These procedures will ensure that the district has a proper time to make required notification by state statute and prepare the required technology. Obviously, if there's a technology component, it says telephone or electronic means, which really is video conferencing. So, we have those components, again, that we need to prepare for. State statute says these are the things as far as notification that we need to do. So, there's, there's a process. So, that's why we've kind of set the procedures for, so we have the time to complete that. And the procedures, I'm just going to step really briefly through just because of time, and we don't need to go into the exact, all the procedures in detail. So, again, the members will need to notify the superintendent's office no less than 15 days prior to the meeting. And again, so we can make the statute timeline to post in saying, this is what we're doing. Per statute, public notification will be posted on the district website. It specifically spells out the district website. The proper technology and training will be provided to the members. Obviously, we want you to be able to connect successfully and have a successful meeting. That's a part of the process. The nice thing about what, the way the statute reads is it does say telephone or other electronic means. So, that means we have options. So, optimally, obviously, being video seeing and hearing is the optimal. But it says telephone as well. So, telephone gives us the audio component of that, which really kind of gives us a backup. So, we really have two systems to work with, which I don't foresee, you know, a video conference issue, but it does leave us that opening for the telephone component. So, that's really the gist of the procedures. We do have some additional items. I didn't list all of them again, but I did list a couple important additional items for the procedures as far as the district's concerned, is that the use of this technology will fall under the guidelines of the district policy. So, you know, all that, that district policy includes the board members and all staff. So, it does fall under each of those guidelines. And again, all procedures that I've kind of laid out here a little bit, again, briefly, are subject to immediate change based on statute or interpretation of statute. You know, there's, there's, this is, this video conferencing concept and these technologies such as Skype and GoToMeeting and some of these other things, and using those for meetings in a more formal sense are something that's a little bit newer when it comes to school boards. So, there really isn't a lot of case law. There's interpretation of the statute directly. So, we're definitely working on that. There'll be further work on that. This is just kind of informing the board that we have been laying the groundwork to make this happen and set the procedures for the district to do this. Any questions?
Go ahead, Lori.
Yeah, actually, I was wondering, have we had consultation with Karen Keppel?
We have.
Okay. The way that I did understand as far as the video conferencing, I've been to several of these open meeting training sessions, and they stress that, that all board members need to be able to see and hear each other as well as the general public. And that, that, I'm assuming that that's the case. And that every location where someone is at that is attending the board meeting formally needs to be accessible to the public and also posted as well. That's the way I understood it.
Okay.
Because that's what they said over and over and over again.
And I, as I, I don't want to try and interpret that exactly, but, you know, we are, again, reviewing that, and we will continue to review that and make any changes as we need to. But what we, the statute does allow for the meetings to happen that way on special circumstances for us, is that what we're saying. We're saying special circumstances. That's listed out in our procedures. And so, again, you know, subject to change based on our interpretation of the law, and we are working with legal counsel on that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Further questions? All right, thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Next, summer programming. Presenter is Dwayne Burkers, Director of Teaching and Learning. Nicole Hallaby, Director of Student Service. And Christine Stunkel, Director of Community Ed.
Superintendent Kelly, Chair Person Lee, members of the board. Summer 2013, it's always fun to talk about summer and start thinking ahead. So, as you know, we do lots of things here in the summer. Academics, school readiness, exploration, fitness, letting kids pursue interests. It's a busy place. And so, tonight, we just wanted to talk to you about some of our plans for the different things that will be going on this upcoming summer. Again, we'll have elementary summer school and secondary summer school. Elementary is for our current K-5 students with the focus on remediation in reading and math. Secondary summer school, last year was the first year, and we will continue. I think it was very successful, including our middle school students. Current six-12 students will be attending that if they need help with grad testing or credit recovery. So, we're pleased to, again, be offering busing and free breakfast and lunch to our students at elementary, and that our secondary students will also have the opportunity to eat breakfast and lunch as well. So, we'll be in Highland in the high school, and Superintendent Kelly told you who our principals will be. So, we're looking forward to working on hiring teachers and getting that up and ready.
Good evening. Community education is active year-round, and during the summer months, we have our couple of programs through the 21st Century Grant, and that's the Outdoor Club and also Environmental Camp. The Outdoor Club is focused more on the high school level, and the Environmental Camp is elementary. We also have, we continue to support the Strength Camp and also the Football Camp through the, through the high school. We have Bridges to Kindergarten that prepares 75 rising kindergarteners to be successful in kindergarten, and that's three weeks of the start of August. And then, we also have Adventure Club. A very robust summer Adventure Club program. You'll probably remember from last summer that the Adventure Club program was very involved also in Blooming Heights, the edible schoolyard, including learning how to garden, cook, and then to also sell at the farmer's market. So, many programs through community education collaborating with other departments in the district during the summer.
And in special education, any student who is on IEP, an Individualized Education Plan, when the team gets together, the parents, the teachers, and related service providers, if they believe that they need summer programming in order to be successful in the fall, then those students are provided that service K through 12. Infants and up to five-year-old is required by federal law to receive summer programming all summer if they're under five and on an IEP.
In addition, we also have some other programs that go on. One is a summer read program that is home visits. We go into different families and drop off book bags, and then the teachers will come back each week to read with kids and to do math with them. So, it's a chance for teachers to work with kids in their homes, get to know families, and provide that those rooms full of books in their, in their homes throughout the entire summer. In addition to that, Summer Academy will be here immediately after school's out, and we'll run its three-week program. Over a thousand students will be here in the high school in Highland going to that. And then, one new program that we are going to pilot this year is an engineering camp at the middle school, where we will hope to invite not only our current fifth graders going into sixth grade, but open that up to any fifth grader across the school district that might want to participate and see how we do engineering in our middle school. So, a way to get kids in the summer, again, working with Angel Brown and her team, who make engineering just a whole lot of fun. So, that's our summer school, and there's, there will be more and lots of work to be done still, but we wanted to give you that up.
Questions?
Well, we look forward to seeing more.
Oh, I just have a comment. I love the idea of the summer engineering camp. That's, that's a great way of introducing, you know, introducing our schools. You know, I think it's great. I'm going to sign my son up.
Like I said, we'll look forward to hearing more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is School Board Recognition. Superintendent Kelly.
Madam Chair, members of the board. This is a very important agenda item. The Minnesota School Boards Association has set aside February 18 through the 22nd as School Board Recognition Week in Minnesota, as a time to build awareness and understanding of a vital function of elected officials and what, what the Board of Education does in our society for our students. Columbia Heights Public Schools is joining all the public schools across the state, both tonight and next week, to honor local school board members for their commitment to the communities in their district. And in our case, it's Columbia Heights, Hilltop, and Southern Philly. School board members establish policies to ensure an efficient and effective school system. They serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools. They represent local education interest to state and federal government in ensuring compliance with state and federal law. They devote their knowledge, time, talents, and sometimes treasure to serve as advocates for our students and our school system. They serve as strong advocates for public education, and they spend many hours in school board training programs to enhance their understanding of school board governance and public policy. And I could say, and other duties is assigned because they do much, much more than that. As Superintendent of the Columbia Heights Public Schools, I'd like to express my appreciation to each and every one of you for all that you do for the Columbia Heights Public School students here, to provide them with a first-rate education and a very bright future. And we'd like to offer you two tokens of recognition for your dedication in public education and continuing service to our children. One you will find at your place, which is a big old cookie with the calories all taken out of it that says, "You're the best." And the other is a certificate of appreciation. What I'm going to do is walk over, actually, to the red microphone right now. And I would you please come up as I call your name to receive or... The first, the first person that I would like to call is for School Board Recognition Week, for dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to the community, children in this community, is John Larkin, who is in his first year. The second person that I'd like to call up, who is also in her first year, is Lori Myers, for her dedication. The third person, who is actually in her third year, is Member Laura Palmer. A big shout out for that. And let's see, who will the next one be? The suspense is mounting. The next school board member I'd like to recognize is Scott Bardell, who is in his eighth year of public service on our board. Member Ted Landwehr is in his ninth year as a school board member of the Columbia Heights Public Schools. How about a shout out for Member Landwehr? Last, but certainly not least, is our senior member of the board, Miss Lee, who wins the total years this year, is in her 10th year of service at the Columbia Heights Public If you're watching and in the viewing public, if you happen to see a community, if you're in the community and you happen to see a school board member in the upcoming week or next week, please give them a shout out for all that they do for our students and our community. We're very proud of each and every one of you, and we look forward to working with you in each of your respective years of service. Thank you so much for what you do. Thank you, Kathy. That was very nice. We appreciate that.
Thanks for taking the calories out.
Yes. That's always a hidden.
Can I get you to call my boss and tell him to be nice to me next week?
Hi. Isn't he always nice to you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Next, we're going to be moving to our action items. We have MSHSL Resolution. Mark Carles, K-12's Activities Director. I don't think Mark's here.
You know, Mark isn't with us tonight, so I would like to take this agenda, I had it for him. Basically, Mark is good enough to apply for this every year, and we've been very lucky to receive it. It's a resolution that if you pass it, allows us to ask for up to $5,000 of scholarship money for students who may not be able to make their fees for either athletics or activities. And Chair Lee has the resolution.
I'll present the resolution. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts, whereas the District 13 School Board recognizes the value of students' participation in extracurricular activities. And whereas the MSHSL Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist school districts to providing seminars, training opportunities, or support for specific functions for students, faculty members, officials, and others who are involved in the athletic and fine arts program. I will entertain a motion on the floor for the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Scott, seconded by Ted. Discussion. Seeing none, can you call the roll?
Ms. Meyer.
Aye.
Mr. Landwehr.
Aye.
Mr. Bardell.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Larkin.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
And the resolution has passed. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is acknowledgement of contributions, and that is a resolution. I'm going to just give out the resolution of contributions. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B point oh-two permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests donations or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that, in that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District 13, that the school board accepts and appreciates the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $745. The detailed background is donations of $54 to North Park Elementary from Pillsbury Sweet Goods Promotion for Student Needs, and donation of books to Valley View Elementary from Kate Loppi, estimated value at $50. Donation of school supplies to Valley View Elementary from Mark Emme, estimated value of $420. Donation of handmade mittens and hats to Valley View Elementary from Artie Burcher, estimated value of $221. Total fiscal year 2012 to 2013 monetary contributions to date are $32,820.66. I will entertain a motion to accept this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from John, seconded by Scott. Discussion. The, all those, oh, call the roll. That's right.
Call the roll, yes. Mr. Larkin.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Bardell.
Aye.
Mr. Landwehr.
Aye.
Ms. Meyer.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
And that resolution has passed. I'd like to thank all of the people that have donated to our... I'd like to thank all of the people that have donated to our schools. Uh, next, board policy, second reading. I'm gonna turn this over to Member Bardell.
All right. Um, the board be asked to approve, uh, following policies. 604 instructional curriculum, 609 religion, 611, 611 homeschooling, 702 accounting, 712 video surveillance other than on buses, and 713 student activity accounting.
This is up for a second reading?
Up for a second reading. Um, I don't think we've received any comments or-
I haven't heard anything.
Nope.
Anybody? I'll have to entertain a motion on the floor.
So moved.
Motion by Scott?
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion?
I think these look mostly just to be statutory changes and adding references. Is that correct?
As far as I know.
Okay. I didn't see anything substantially changed.
I didn't either. I, I guess I made the same assumption.
Okay. I'm, I'm not on the committee, so that's why I'm-
Yeah, I, I wasn't at the time either, so.
Okay.
I, I believe that those were, they were just minor, minor, a lot of, a lot of items were just, uh, just simply adding the statutes and slight, you know, changes. Yeah.
I also wanna make a comment about the religion policy. Um, and I, I think I talked, I made the same comment last time it came up for review. Um, where it says in, in the, uh, General Statement of Policy, paragraph A, um, that the school district encourages all students and employers to have, employees to have an appreciation for and tolerance of each other's views. Um, I think it's important to talk about tolerance as a term that's, that's a politically, that's a charged term. It can be interpreted in many ways. And, um, what I believe has been in practice, and you can maybe confirm this, Superintendent Kelly, in our district, is that it's, it's not interpreted in a way that the students and employees have to accept each other's views, but simply to, um, to not, um, to, to keep the peace, basically, and not, uh, have to, um, it's not abrogation of their free speech or religious liberties in the district.
That would be correct.
Okay. So I think that's important to, to point that out, that, uh, tolerance is, is not being used in that sense.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion is carried. Repeal of policy 701.3, purchasing. Scott?
Yes, uh, the board will be asked for repeal of policy 701.3, purchasing. Uh, my understanding is, uh, this policy is no longer needed in the district.
All right. I'll entertain a motion on the floor.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion from Ted, seconded by Scott. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next, we have the election of the board chair. Um, remember, Dawn, you wanna, did, Ted, did you wanna say anything or?
Did you wanna say anything?
Nope.
Okay. I guess I would just, just again, point out, um, it's time to, to move on, and, and we've had the same chair for five years. And, um, you know, and when Chair Lee started, um, um, George Bush was still president, and so it's been that long. And so I think it's just healthy for the district. This, this is not a, an issue of Chair Lee versus myself. It's an issue of, of, of positive change and, um, and getting into a, a system where we, we don't have the same chair for years and years and years. So I just wanna make sure that, I, I wanna point out that that is the issue, not anything other than that.
Dawn, do you wanna, is it Dawn that called or?
I think I would call.
Yeah.
They didn't actually go over that in training about elections. And actually, Dawn handles most of the election stuff anyway.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I think we've had her do it.
I have a huge appreciation for the job she does. Okay.
Mr. Larkin?
Lee.
Ms. Lee?
Lee.
Mr. Bardell?
Lee.
Mr. Landwear?
Landwear.
Ms. Meyer?
Landwear.
Palmer?
Landwear.
All right. All right, next we'll move on to board topics. Anybody got anything tonight? Board topic? No?